Sir, Anyege Meya, you are welcome.
Alright, as the distribution of the color is ongoing, I hope the color have reached their destinations. Okay. I will have... We have the governorship candidate of PDP as she earlier introduced. Let's place one house please, one house. Let's invite him to greet our people then he get back to his seat. I was talking of a high chief doctor Ifagi Chukwuma OD, Anyeju. Nando Bebe. You are welcome. You are welcome.
The PDP candidate came with so many people, we may not number them. We may not mention all of them, but I want to recognize in a special way the Anyeju's Campaign Council Director for Publicity. Talking about the former Commissioner for Information and Abon State, Chief Abian Onike. Chief, you are welcome. I want to recognize my own brother and friend, my sweet aunt, Chief Chimarobi Okore. Chimarobi Okore is one of the members of the Campaign Council team. Chief, you don't hear me brought to the table or to the microphone. And the panelists are already seated. The chairman is already seated. Arranging some things. In the program, we have the address or the welcome address or keynote address. And to do that, I would have want to hand over the microphone to my Reverend Father MC.
I actually came to listen. I didn't imagine I would be asked to speak. I want a lesson to the gubernatorial candidates to see what they have in plan for our people. But let me seize this opportunity to welcome all the gubernatorial candidates and all the dignitaries, our priests, and a cross-section of the people of God from different parishes in our state, the press, and everyone here. I appreciate the fact that you took seriously our call for this interaction between the candidates and the people they wish to govern. I appreciate that this is the first of its kind being organized by the Catholic Diocese of Abakaliki. We are very happy with the attendance by the candidates and those who support them. As you can imagine, the Catholic Diocese of Abakaliki is a grassroots church with 205 parishes and chaplances scattered throughout the nooks and corners of the state, such that whatever happens here today will soon reach all the remote villages. So every place here came with at least one parishana. So we are happy with this development. And without wasting your time, I want to encourage us to realize that we are making history today. Let me mention this. One of those here, one of those who answered our call here today will emerge as governor of Eboni State. That is going to happen. So thank you for honoring us and may God grant us a very peaceful interaction. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you, my Lord. As you was delivering your prayer remarks, another candidate came in. And this is the candidate for Action People's Party, Opera Prince Apollo in the BC. Please, may we put our together for him. You can have your seat there. Thank you, you are welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, let's quickly invite the chief panelists to come forward and give us their modus operandi, how this town hall, how this interactive session will go. And I'm calling on Sir Gregory Odiah Kosa to come forward on behalf of the panelists. Okay. Alright, thank you. Amen.
Good morning, Ebonians. Welcome to the first ever clergy and lady interactive section with the governorship candidates of various political parties in Eboni State, organized by the Catholic Diocese of Abakaliki, Justice Development, Peace and Caritas Initiative, CDAJTPCI. I'm sure you all know our theme is democracy and good governance in Eboni State. I'm one of the panelists.
It's not something like that, that is what we ask, sir.
Thank you so much, good morning all. My name is Philippa Simeon. And I would like to tell us that we are streaming Eboni State Governance Interactive Session live. You can log into your facebook.com/abakalikicatholicdiocese. Thank you so much.
Amen.
So that the audience can also see very clearly, just the cameraman just stood by the side so that you are not blocking anybody at all, please, thank you. Alright, thank you before you continue, let's recognize the candidates, senator candidates, Abga Feboy in South, Sir Ifagi Enje, and the LP, Senator candidate Faboy in Out, Pastor Anselm Enigwe.
Alright, we would like to have, we don't have time at all. We want to do this as quickly as possible. We are going to begin by asking the candidates to step forward and give us their manifesto. Give us their manifesto under five minutes. And in no special order, we, in order not to create confusion, we want to start from left to right and then come back again as the event progresses.
In that order, we have engineer Sunday Andrew Opoke, former general manager of what about Eboni State, standing on the podium already to give us his manifesto.
Thank you very much. I respectfully thank the organizers of this program and our lobby shop, and I wish to stand on existing protocol well established. Thank you very much. My name is engineer Dr. Opokesonde Andrew, wishing to be your governor, your dynamic governor. And then my manifesto, I have, in my manifesto have seven point agenda. The first is gospel revolution. The second is security, technology transfer, industrialization and infra-social development. And then we also have, also have another agenda which is on health, education, and transport. But let me start that all my agenda can be summarized in tripod form. The first is world creation. World creation to Eboni State, we know that there are critical issues that must be handled and we know that Eboni State is going through a phase at this moment. This moment so challenging for Ebonians and any administration that did not design a project and programs to bring Ebonians out of poverty is not doing us a service. And that is why all my agenda, both the tripod agenda, both the seven point agenda and critical areas agenda are geared towards world creation. Then in the tripod agenda, I have what I call unity. In my time as a governor, we will look at Eboni State as one undivided family, one united family. We are, there will be no disparity between the south and the central and the north. And the issue of majority minority, all kind of rig- 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 authority cannot be mentioned. We are one undivided family. At that time, there will be unity of purpose and all I will be doing and I will go need to do is to make sure that Ebonians come under one umbrella as a united blessed family of God. And finally, in the tripod agenda, where we be looking at placing Eboni State in the roadmap of the world? Let me start on world creation. In my world creation agenda, where I have five major critical agendas under it, ranging from human capital development. In human capital development, we know that God created us in a form that poverty is a choice. Your hands can put food on the table for you and your family. Your legs, your mouth, your brains, every part of you is designed to create worlds. But however, there is a role for the society.
Thank you very much. You managed your time well, but I wish those coming after will be, will chat with more concise and precise. The next candidate of APC.
Oh, Tito, did you hear so crazy? Before my time we start counting, let me make some little observation. We're told to be in this arena this morning, which not more than three. And I know church for discipline. So it's big challenge. That sincerity, that focus is being challenged this afternoon. Because what I'm seeing here is more than three per governorship candidate. And that is what's contained in the letter given to us, thank you very much. My name is Wifu Francis Obunna. I'm a graduate of building technology and also a graduate of law. I am a candidate of all progressive congress, Eboni State, a gubernatorial candidate. I am here, distinguished brothers and sisters, to tell you why I want to serve you as your governor. On these notes, I have only one agenda. And what is the agenda? Liberation. And that agenda centered on what we can achieve and what we can do for ourselves, not what governments can do for us. As a human being, you should be able to build a confidence that you too can do something for yourself before you seek government's attention. On these notes, my manifesto is themed manifesto, the people's charter of needs, not the what government wants. And what I mean by people's charter of needs and not governments, what government wants is very strict. And I want you to understand it very clear. In my own understanding, if you come to the area of education, you ask yourself where are we today? Today in the area of education, done very well, as far as I'm concerned, the government of Eboni has been able to lift Eboni States in that backward states of education to a very everable height where we are today. So many states are scratching to get to that point. And I'm very much grateful to God. But are we in a place that we're supposed to be? The answer is no. Why? We didn't show much interest in the area of appropriation, in the area of being focused in our own education sector. And what we do now? What we are going to do is appropriate more resources and be more focused and know where we came from. All of us are from the villages and we know we school at the community primary schools. And today, government primary schools are already the primary schools of the indigents. It's not more the primary school of everybody. It's now the primary schools for the indigents. So I want to build a primary school where everybody, everybody, including my own children, will sit down and school with the children of the poor. That is my intention. And I say it clearly in my manifesto that there is no need, no need me sending my children to private school. Whereas the children of the electorate, those that trust me and gave me their mandate to serve them are schooling in the public school. So my own children and the children of all the political appointee will school at the public school. So in the area of health, today if you look at our fairer teaching hospital, is, I call it at all time the motorary center. Because we can't see her there. Every time you go there, you must see a lot of people that couldn't make it. Why? Because we have people who are very much lackadaisical in taking their duty very trusty and very much needed. So the trouble we have there is not because of the personnel, as people thought. The personnel well, they are not, they don't have the confidence, but they don't have the enabling equipment. So what do we do as a state? Since we don't have hands in managing that fairer teaching hospital, I intended, my intention and that my intention will come to manifestation because whether I'm going to win is sacrosanct, is ordained by God. So I am giving you this for you to take it down, that I'm going to win the election and I will do it. First thing I will do is to build state teaching hospital. We need to build a boy state teaching hospital. And that is one of the two things I said now. Area of education and health is the basic need of every human being. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next please.
Your excellencies, my dear brothers and sisters, I want to rest on the already established protocol. My name is Edward Unkwego. I'm a chartered architect by profession and a human capital developer. I offer myself for selfless service in Eboni State as a governor. And I want you, I wish you employ me as your chief servant. I have a four points development agenda. One is economic development. In economic development, I have five enablers. First is rapid industrialization. I'm going to create 13,000 micro, small and medium enterprises in Eboni State. And that will give me an indirect employment of about 250,000 people in two years. Because micro, small and medium enterprises is the engine room of every economy and the greatest employer of labor. I am going to modernize agriculture. It is the tool of our ancestor that is still used up to today, whole and cutlass. We are going to modernize agriculture. We are going to build dams and canals. We are also going to reactivate the existing ones that have been abandoned. We will create and encourage cluster farming and farm settlements. We are going to encourage farm clubs from nursery, primary, secondary, and tertiary institutions in the state. We are going to look at the area of mineral development. In mineral development, we are challenged because it's also a threat. Artisanal mining has been used to harvest our minerals and I have created death traps in some locations. We are going to organize this sector to be able to process what is being harvested to create a value chain along the line. We are also...
Please, you clap after. Not while he's talking, if you want to, but please.
We are going to enhance our infrastructure, water circulation, there's no water in the whole city now. And we have also some areas in the rural setting that don't have electricity. Even the places who have electricity is a plastic. We are going to look at alternative source of energy. We are going to create jobs, jobs, and jobs. We are going to create sustainable wealth and all-inclusive participation in government affairs in the area of empowerment. Number two is what we call our civic responsibility. We are going to look into education. Education, we are going to look at assets, quality and relevance of our education sector. By assets, we mean increase in enrollment of students in schools. We are going to look at curricular information that will be relevant in developing our state in the area of skills that will empower the development agenda we have to bridge the gap, to leapfrog development, to bridge the imbalance in our development, in global development index. So we are going to leapfrog our educational sector to provide skills. The health sector, we are going to also get people involved in preventive Medicare, preventive Medicare, to be able to give inoculations that will prevent cancer, high blood pressure, and dietary eh 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 trainings and exercises. Lastly, we have what we call good governance. We will rule by the constitution of the country. We will encourage security agencies, the law enforcement agencies to provide security for our people. We are also going to ensure that there is reformation of the public and civil service to be able to eh eh pay people their pensions and gratities and employ more qualified teachers in our schools. Lastly, healthy environment. We are going to work on our environment. We will, we will sanitize, we will plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Develop villages, cities.
Thank you.
And our communities, thank you very much.
God bless you. NRM.
Praise the Lord. My name is Komretoni Usulo, NRM gubernatorial candidate, Eboni State. Before my time starts counting.
Please, um, please, this is out of it at all.
I am here to present my manifesto, which Ebonians are going to enjoy when I become the governor of this state. My agenda is on threefold. I will rescue, rebrand, and reposition Eboni State. Number one, in the area of security, because it is when you are alive, that is when you talk of enjoying dividends of democracy. I am saying it before Ebonians today, that should there be any crisis in any of the local government that lasts more than 21 working days, I should be held responsible. Number two, education. Education will be given a priority in our government. There should be a system where those who are qualified for scholarships should be given scholarship. And I make it a point, I make it a point of duty that there will be free tuition fees for children from primary to secondary school. And I will ensure that there is no child that is studying on that mango tree. Then on health, they say health is wise. I will ensure that the brain drain of our qualified doctors that leave this shore of Nigeria to outside in search of greener pasture, they will be forced to come back because we will create a nebula environment for them to work in our hospitals. We will not allow our hospital to die. We will actually revive it, resuscitate it, and ensure that there are qualified medical doctors to attend to patients and there will be drugs also. Then on the economy, because no government survives without the economy being intact. Eboni State have mineral resources that we can mine and translate to a good economy for us. It will increase our GDP. And that is why Niger Seasbank Factory, the illegal mining going on here and there, and other areas that we have, we can tap on those mineral resources. Then in the case of agriculture, I will ensure that those people who are farmers will be working with their shoulders high. Because if you now say introduce yourself, you hardly see anybody standing up here to say I am a farmer. But I am making it a point of duty that farmers will be giving salvation to enable them make it big in that industry. Then on the area of infrastructure, even though our government, they have really tried on infrastructure, but the way I will actually modify is should there be any area that we have a solar system to be improved, we will maintain that area. And the maintenance culture of our infrastructure should also be taken absolute control. Then on the area of human rights, rule of law. It is said that court is for the common man, but it is now made to understand that court is no more for the common man. It is now for the big men. I will ensure that justice is obtained wherever necessary. Then in the civil service, there will be a civil service reform. Civil servants will enjoy their due pay as a twenty. And most importantly, I will ensure that no civil servant resigns or retires without owning a house of his own. And in the area of welfare.
Thank you.
It is noted that all will be put in place to ensure that we enjoy what we're supposed to enjoy in the course of dividend of democracy.
Abga.
Again, let me thank all of us. My name is Professor Bernard Odo, Abga, governorship candidate. And before I talk about my manifesto, let me bring us up to speed where we are. We are currently ranked the third poorest state in this country. Our unemployment rate is eighty-two point five percent. Our education, twenty-six percent of our children are out of school. Fifty-six percent of them cannot read and write, those who are in school. Seventy-eight percent of those who are in school, primary school, can't enter secondary school. And the statistics goes on and on and on. Under Dr. Sam Ergo, our college of medicine was ranked second after Ibadu. Our law faculty was ranked first at some point. Today, our university is ranked one hundred and eighteen among the committee of universities in this country. Eboni State has the highest incidence of insecurity. This place is the most insecure place in southern Nigeria today. Food prices is highest in Eboni State, among all the states in the southeast. So what do we intend to do differently? In education, by God's grace, when I come on board in May, I will scrap all levies and return free education from primary school all to work. Two hundred and ten schools have been delisted now from work because of crisis in our school system. So we will reorganize our education and ensure that every child between five years and fifteen years must be in school. Our first law on educational reform would be that any child who is not in school, between age of five and fifteen, the parents will be arrested and tried and imprisoned. Because we will make our education functional and effective so we can produce citizens that are globally competitive. Our university system, we are going to ensure that the council of the university, the governing council and the management of the university are people with proven track record, who are effective, who understand what education is. No longer are we going to run council that is run by those who don't understand the issues at stake. In area of funding, we are going to benchmark our budget to reserve commitment, which is twenty-five percent budget allocation to our education. We will also run our budget in line with SDG goals so that we'll be able to leverage global funding around the world to support our education. In health, Eboni State today has only six doctors to attend to four point two million people. One pharmacist, seventeen nurses, no scientist. Under me as the governor, we are going to employ at least additional fifty doctors and additional fifty health support services. Our primary healthcare will be meant to be effective. We will connect with the national primary healthcare, the World Health Agency, to ensure that the fund that comes from federal government to support primary healthcare is available in Eboni State. In area of agriculture, we will expand our land availability for agriculture practices. Today, the largest farmland in Eboni is less than two hundred hectares contiguous land. We cannot produce food when we don't have land prepared. I am committed to ensuring that within our first four years, Eboni have at least thirty thousand hectares land prepared. Each time we have a ten thousand land preparation and invest it, we will create hundred thousand jobs. So our commitment is that in our first four years, we will lower our unemployment rate by fifty percent, which means at least one point six billion jobs we created in our first four years. We will do that through agriculture, we will do that through education. Ogus State is a, is a state in Nigeria, they have, they have twelve private universities. We will create an education hub where we will provide access to internet, access to technology and give access to those who want to invest in our education. They will set up education there and now force traffic into Eboni, those who want to have higher education. In area of security, we will introduce smart security. We, I want Eboni people to live in freedom, no more harassment. Today, this place is highly oppressive and oppressive. Nobody can function under this environment. We will use technology to drive our security. Then area of sports, sports development. A young child with energy that has no commitment to education and sports is prone to crime. So we will mainstream sports in our curriculum. Every child in Eboni will do at least three hours of sports every week. In agriculture again, we want to focus on areas that bring relief valley. Today, palm oil is more expensive than crude oil. One barrel of crude oil today is one hundred and five dollars. Same one barrel of palm oil is three hundred and fifty dollars per barrel. We will create at least a ten thousand palm plantation with oil processing facility to produce oil both for local market and for export market. In all, I will lead, I will lead a decent government. I will be accountable to our churches.
Thank you very much.
I will show leadership by example. I am one of those who is standing here who have no E S C case. I don't have an E S C case. When I resign from government.
Prof, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. P B B.
What is the green juice? My name is Ifany Chikuma Odie. The gubernatorial candidate for the People's Democratic Party. Let me say that I want to thank the organizers of this event, this first kind event. Uh first, my manifesto is prioritized on four points agenda. One, as related, economic development. Two, new and existing infrastructure development. Three, youth and human capital development. Four, institutional reform and the rule of law and security. Let me say that in every responsible government, the first thing is on how do you get funds to be able to fund some of your policies. As such, you need somebody who is coming from a very good, notable, private and business background, which in that have honed my skills over the last twenty years. In work creation, I said to people, it is not about what you do, but how do you intend to do it? We are in a state where the only industry that function is only politics. We're in a state where we are ranked third poorest state in the whole of the south, eh in the Nigeria by N B S. And we are ranked number one in the southeast. We're in a state where our GDP per capita is about two point nine billion dollars with four point three million persons, which if you translate it by per capita today, we are having less than one thousand euro per person with an inflation going to about almost twenty-one point something percent in the country. What that suggests is that Eboni people are actually going deeper, deeper and falling into poverty. I came from a background, where I came from a very humble background. I started a business with zero branch sheets and was able to establish about twenty companies. And that which I think it is possible with me to do in Eboni State. First, I want to prioritize security and freedom to the people as number one agenda. With security, you will be able to attract foreign and direct, foreign investors into your state with good policies. With security, you can attract, you know, so many, you know, eh investments that will benefit the youths and every person living in Eboni State. And how do we want to do it? We want to go into eh eh security, building our security architecture by introducing detail and sovereign, sovereign security system whereby we have less, you know, human interface in providing security for our people. And as such, once we are able to, you know, guarantee security to our people and give them freedom, because one of the things I discovered in Eboni State today, we barely have freedom to ourselves. Well, in work creations, mine is to industrialize Eboni State with policies that will enable private sectors to see Eboni State as the next business hub in the whole Nigeria. It is possible. We have very arable land for agriculture. We have a lot of mineral resources deposited here, God gave it to us. And what are we doing with them? Like the mineral resources, we only honor exclusive eh, you know, eh policy of federal government. But then there are some other things that are not that exclusive of the government.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. A T C.
Praise the Lord. Our Lord is good. Please, I don't like the noise in the background. Let me start this way. I didn't receive invitation to this program. I was in Enugua airport trying to go for my business to Abuja, when one of my son called that my attention was needed here. Organizers, I want to say that I still need that invitation before I go. Please.
Noted.
Manifesto presented by Apostle Principal Osundebisokpara, PhD. As a governorship candidate of Asian People's Party, A P P in Eboni State towards Nigerian general relations in two thousand and twenty-three. You've brought up that the moderator called my party wrongly. I franked that. Point number one, God created every human being on earth. Man all over the world stands equal before the almighty God. With that knowledge and grain embedded and concreted in my mind, I will provide level playing ground for all Ebonians. Without varieties in discrimination, bias, evil, partiality, preference or nepotism. Point number two, major criticism will come in my administration. Rather meritocracy will be upheld. Exceptional performance will be adequately appreciated, remunerated, commended and celebrated regardless of who is involved. High flyers will be aided to fly up hi- higher. Point number three, the principles of rule of law, equity, fair play and justice were applied to all and sundry. Nobody is above the law of the land. With that in view, the independence of the three arms of government, legislative, executive and judiciary as enshrined in the Nigerian Constitution nineteen ninety-nine, as amended, will be respected by all. Separation of power and appropriations and balances might be, must not be compromised at any time. Point number four, mass life is sacred according to the Holy Bible. Therefore, hya killers, armed robbers, ritual killers, bandits, terrorists, Boko Haram, full-on hustlers and kidnappers are not welcome in my domain. Anybody conflicted by a court or competent judicial for involvement in any of the crimes mentioned above, we go in for it. Is that noted? Dividends of democracy are for all the citizens of Eboni State without exception. Therefore, people of all ages will be classified as attain their peculiar needs. Thus, zero to nine years, ten to twenty-nine years, thirty to fifty-nine years, sixty to seventy-nine years, eighty to ninety-nine years and one hundred to twenty years respectively. Under age zero to nine years, adult people, hundred to one hundred and twenty will be entitled to a monthly stipend from the government boss. Point number six, I will pursue figure of like a presidency to see that Eboni State national allocation is doubled in order to meet our financial need by meeting, if not surpass, the requirement for soil recognition.
Let's listen to him.
Ladies be peace. Point number seven, Eboni State is to witness a prouding shift in all ramifications, more especially by moving from consumption to production state. In all the sectors of the economy, both on micro and macro levels. Human capital development will be enthroned and accorded pride of place to ensure that mass illiteracy is drastically eradicated or at least reduced to a bare minimum in the state. Dignity or labor is to be held in high esteem. Our people of all walks of life are to mental value and treasure whatever they do legitimately as to any living without feeling inferior. Since it is not people who say I blame that are the riches, isn't it? To ensure that all sectors of Eboni State, economy work optimally and remain viable around the clock throughout my footprint of eight years. Four years a piece, times two. Politics in Eboni State is to be redefined by my administration and I. No more politics of bitterness, bigotry, self-centeredness, selfishness and greed.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You will agree with me that gathered here this afternoon are most eminently qualified candidates to lead Eboni State. And they have shown us their mettle for status. Please, let's give them a round of applause. I'd like to remind you that at some point in this interactive, we're going to have what we call the citizen's data of demand. It's actually going to summarize what we as a people want. When it is time, um we will bring that to you. Now, we have spoken on general terms. We will now want you, candidates, flag bearers, to break down what you have told us. We have about six subjects to cover. Economy, education, security, um, health and so on. Now, we will now begin with economy. Everybody knows economy is biting hard, both at the national and state level. Everybody's feeling the pinch. We'll now want to ask our incoming governors to be, what measures will you take to reverse this trend? It would be nice if you can be more specific, be more pictorial so that we will understand the pictures you are painting for your own good and our own good. Remember, three minutes and two minutes.
All right, thank you very much. In economy, Eboni State is well blessed, both by geography and both by resources. By geography, Eboni State is located in a very strategic place in the map of Nigeria, where Eboni is only one state that is connected to the north through Benue. It's connected to the east through Enugu. It's connected to south, south through Cross River. So if we look at by location, Eboni is not supposed to be a poor state. First, I'm going to open a route from Eboni Local Government to Benue and from, from to Benue. And when we do that, Eboni will be the shortest route to Abuja. All the states in the southeast will be going to Abuja through Eboni State. And then you can understand that it will improve in our economy. And we are, I'm going to negotiate with Cross River to create a seaport. Eh eh, we have a very big river in Cross River. We will have a seaport that will be between Cross River and Eboni State. Whatever Lagos, whatever have developed Lagos, develop Otakot, develop eh eh Odisha, we develop Eboni State. And in terms of natural resources, my first degree is in geology and I've worked so hard on every part of this state. Eboni State is well endowed with natural resources, but let me just take few of it. The limestone, lead, zinc, but most importantly, Eboni is the old, one of the two states in Nigeria that have first-class gypsum located in Asaka Mango. That gypsum alone is enough to make Eboni State one of the richest states in the southeast without oil. So and it's not, it is not difficult to develop and the gypsum, you know, is called, is what you use in the white cement. With gypsum and limestone, that's what we produce as cement. And gypsum is used in P O P, so many uses of gypsum. So only gypsum alone can create wealth for Eboni State with other natural resources. Then we are blessed with human resources. With our human resources, we can develop so much wealth by bringing in our expert today. And Ebonian is a child of trade doctors in the UK. Today, Ebonians are well located in different parts of Nigeria, different part of the world, doing very well. And eh eh with this, we'll take back our children that are hockey in every part of, eh eh every part of Nigeria, we'll take back our children. Because we are going to have a robust economic system that will engage everyone and we shall be blessed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, sorry, we will, we skipped. You're going to sit down and answer this question. You don't have to come to the podium anymore. We just be handing the microphone from one person to the other, please. You prefer to stand here? Okay. Okay.
Um, in my party, we say verify. If somebody is talking about economy or development or what he's going to do, you have to verify his character, what he's been doing for the past twenty years. You have to verify his competence, his background, you have to verify his capacity. If he's saying you want to do industry, how many have you done before? How many people are you, are under your employment right now? So i- in terms of economy, what I have proposed is not political propaganda. It's based on the synopses of our SWOT analysis, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats in Ebony State. It is fact that we are going to build our economy around micro, small and medium enterprises. In my administration, we are going to incubate it, we are going to make it sustainable and people will be given jobs. In the areas I've mentioned before, for instance. Ebony State. Let us recall that at the point of creation, Ebony State had five thousand three hundred thirty-one square kilometers. Our, our, our population uh, uh, density is six hundred and thirty persons per square kilometer. Which means we have space for agriculture, for farming. And we are going to develop our micro, small and medium enterprises around farming. We are also going to develop it around our infrastructure. For example, water reticulation. If we have water, people will be happy and employment to be created around that. We are also going to look at this mineral development. For your information, that is Ebony State had oil and gas. The first oil was discovered twenty-eight years before the Olobray oil. Why it was not harvested is because we are landlocked. And so now that Nigeria has approved modular refinery, there is nothing wrong in creating a one in Ebony State to increase our IGR. Ebony is rated as one of the poorest states with seventy-nine point five percent poor. And it's recorded in our stunted growth. Our children, twenty-four percent of our children have stunted growth. You can see it in the churches, if you go to rural churches. And so we are going to develop our economic. Uh, uh, around the areas of agriculture, the areas of uh, uh, healthcare, the areas of mineral development. And Ebony is blessed because even the Transaharan route passes through here. And this has been a root, trade route of Africa. We can do a lot of dry ports here. And when we change our consumption to production economy, a lot of people will benefit from it and we turn Ebony to an industrial hub. Thank you very much.
Anyway, it is not for us to judge. People are listening and people are watching.
I've come again to actually expiate. On the need for us to increase our economy. There are diverse ways of increasing the economy. Take for instance, in the area of our mineral resources, we can actually employ technocrats. To come into Ebony State and make good use of our mineral resources, which will eventually give gainful employment to our youths. Then beside that, the community that have mineral resources will also start to benefit because it's part of what our government will offer. And in the area of trying to increase the economy, agriculture is a basic tool with which we can do that. Like I said before, and I'm still saying it again, that if we actually engage in agriculture that we can be exporting. We will earn hard currency, foreign reserves, and that makes it possible that the economy of Ebony State will actually increase. And we will also encourage small, medium enterprises. Because the problem of most of our businessmen and women is that they lack the financial strength of involving in small-scale business enterprises. And when that is encouraged, it will go a long way to increase the IGR of the state. And like I said before, if you do economies, you discover that those people that actually produce it wanted a situation where when the economy grows. Then the Ebonyans will enjoy the benefits of the democracy. I also employ us that our government will take absolute control in the area of making sure our economy is taken adequate control of. Thank you.
I'd like the next speaker to um, tell us about taxation. A lot of companies are funded, some have left the state. How would you encourage that?
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, let me say something. Globally. Investment is determined by ease of doing business. Uh, Ebony State today is ranked twenty-six over thirty-six on the ease of doing business scale. The implication is that Ebony is a very hostile investment. We have too many taxes in this city. By God's grace, when I assume office in May, we will review all taxes and remove all unheard of taxes. Dubai is doing well and mineral countries are doing well because they have made their countries destination for investments. We will expand our capabilities on issue of uh, issuance of permits for businessmen. On the issue of arbitration commitment to those who want to invest in Ebony State. If we don't sort out our ease of doing business, nobody is going to come here. I've spoke on education. If we are able to incubate ten to fifteen private universities in Ebony State, that will drive traffic into this direction. If we expand our ability to mechanize agriculture and activate our export processing zone. We will create thousands of jobs because economy is measured by amount of job a system is able to create. So my focus is to provide enabling environment as a government. Government is not a businessman. That a trader or a businessman is not a guarantee for good governance. It is empathy, creating environment where all can thrive. Then most importantly, skill. If young people don't have skill, they can't participate in economy. And that is why education is my priority number one, number two, number three, number four. Ability to convert our people who don't have skill to those who have skills to compete both locally, globally and internationally is a key to the future of our economy. You know, so that will be short-term measure, midterm measure and long-term measure. But ultimately, making here an environment for business destination is a key to expanding our opportunities for growing economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to take you on on national resources. National, natural resources. Okay. Ebony State is endowed with many natural resources. If elected, how would you use these resources to boost the economy of Ebony State? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, the land is blessed. Indeed, when I come into office in May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three by special grace of God. Um. I spread a lot of blessings. From the national resources that God has endowed us with. First. Like I mentioned when I was introducing my manifesto. That natural resources or solid minerals is under the exclusive list of the federal government. But then the state governors are the one that issues the CEO, the CEO of those lands. You go to Abuja, you go and get permits, you come to the states where those natural resources are embedded. Then the governor will be the one to give you the CEO of all. And then before you come to me for CEO of all, I'll discuss with you. The first, it is not about mining resources from the states, exporting it outside the states. I would discuss with you on the aspect of setting up, setting up refineries. Which will enhance employment to our people. How do we do it? We get them, any of the investors coming into Ebony for mining. There is need for you to discuss with your foreign partners to set up refineries in Ebony State. Because when you do, you have actually increased the number of jobs within the states. You know, something like lead. Today is almost. Being exported almost everywhere in the world because we use lead to do batteries. And with lead alone, we can have millions of Ebonyans, not only Ebonyans, Nigerians coming into Ebony City for job. So by the time we come into office, we harness our mineral resources into job creation. Remember we have N'Diabe Beach where we have white sand beach. This white sand beach can be used to produce soda ash and soda ash lights, which can be used for detergent industries. Bottling companies and so on and so forth. When we come into office, we attract investors, not only seeing that white sand alone to use it to build houses. But to use it, to turn it into, into agri and arid processing hub. So these are the things we intend to do when we come into office. So we are going to harness our natural resources very, very well and turn it into effective use for wealth creation to our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, we are expecting questions from the audience in written form. We already received some, but we want to have a good cluster before we start using them. But there's a question on economy, I'll give it to the priest to ask, sent in from the audience.
Oh, to the next candidate. This question is from one for Fidelis from Saint Charles Parish, Niger Sem. Says, if you become the governor of Ebony State, what is your promise to the Niger Sem company at Nkallag? Which is for now abandoned for almost twenty years. Bearing in mind that it has the capacity of generating a lot of IGR to the state and even beyond. Thank you.
Do I answer from here? Straight to the question. Niger Sem. I want to say that long time ago, when I was in the primary school, we were hearing about Niger Sem that was located at in Kalag. We were reading it in readers. And what we are hearing about it is, is no longer the way it used to be. I want to say that there are many factors to eat. And when those factors are addressed, Niger Sem will resuscitate or resurrect and bounce back to life. I want to say that there are powers behind Niger Sem not working today. I mentioned politicians or bakery and backbiting and the rest of them. The boindar syndrome is to be addressed. I want to say that some people who have a link. To what is to be done in Niger Sem to make it operate ultimately. And one way or the other, instead of them coming together to address the issue or the problems holistically, some of them are saying, let me see. How is going to be? If I digress a little bit as we are talking about economy, my colleagues will mention other things. And I know that one of the problems we have here in Ebony State is power. And the power has been privatized and it is not to the best of our being. It should be addressed. And capable manpower is to be employed to see that Niger Sem bounce back to operation. You cannot give what you don't have. If the people have been in charge of Niger Sem and not giving what is expected, they have to be removed. But that the power that have been in Ebony State, they are saying that the right people will not be there. Just as we have different political parties as I address organizer of this program. Inviting few of the flag bearers, I don't know the reason. There are some capable hands and I even will tell myself that if you wanted to be practicalized because you are not to be talking about theory. I will tell myself to see that what we make Niger seem to be working is done. I want to stop on that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any candidate have anything to say on it? Okay, Prof.
Yeah, it's important that those who want to be hired for job knows the issues before they start talking. The challenge in Niger Sem is vested interest. There is too much vested interest by the state government. I was in government when the investor came. And the issue was that there were too many commitments that the state was demanding from investor. Power provision, health facility, education and royalty. And investor said, allow me to set up this business. I can keep to this commitment once the plan starts running. But the government said, no, you have to give us all this upfront. That is part of the problem we have in Ebony State. The vested interest of government officials keys business. That's why I'm saying that ease of doing business is key to activating economy. When I come in by God's grace, I will sit down with the investor. Whatever he needs to get that place working, I will sign off. Because if that place is working, jobs will be created, opportunity will be available for people to have income. So it is vested interest that has keyed Niger Sem and many other businesses in Ebony State. When you demand too much interest, too much payment, too much conditions, investors go to where they are treated like kings. And that's why Oguse State is expanding, Lagos is expanding. Nobody harasses people over there. Thank you.
All right, quickly.
Thank you very much. The issue of Niger Sem is an issue of concern. But like Prof said, is vested interest. Apart from vested interest, we also look at the behavior of our investors. Because if you are bringing, I have an experience, experience that there are companies in this, in this state. And that we have what called capital flights. And this capital flight, because the people working there, the other Chinese, Indians, foreigners or that. And when, when there's a little demand of social responsibility. Because in every factory or industry, there's always a social responsibility. And this social responsibility is also key to development. Because, okay, the experience I have is that people make a lot of money. There's one company in this state that's making much more money than the location of this state. But it's a capital flight. We don't have anybody there, no, no professional, no technical person there. And then for them to do little road, give water, do little things and then because it's not written. And if you say, go ahead and do business, you are very interested that you go ahead and do business. But we must also look at social responsibility as a means of doing business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll shortly get into education sector, but before that, there's also. Okay, please, as briefly as possible. One minute.
Uh, what I want to say about this Niger Sem issue is that's why I talked about micro, small and medium enterprises. Is easier to take decisions. Is quicker to take decisions and let things move on. It's not only Niger Sem that will have limestone in Ebony State. We have limestone in other locations, we will try other options. If the federal government and the structure of Niger Sem is making it possible, we look for other limestone. I've done a lot of research on limestone deposit in Ebony State. We can create smaller capacity uh, uh, industries that will produce the same cement. If you go to China and India, they don't look for the biggest size. They start small, the one that can give us, the one we can manage. So we will look for alternative to Niger Sem. We have limestone spread across and so we will create micro, small and medium enterprises around our mineral deposit, especially limestone. Thank you very much.
All right, finally, PPP, no, please, um, PPP. Public, private partnership.
Um, I believe in one thing.
Many candidates have submitted that the ease of doing business in Ebony State is not very conducive. And we all know that most times government cannot do everything. What is your plan towards PPP, getting private investors to be also part of?
Well, that's exactly why.
Developing the economy.
Yeah, thank you. That was exactly why I want to make small contribution towards when my other colleagues discuss about the, the Niger Sem, you know, Kalag Cement Industry. I believe there's one thing, one. The intention matters in every leadership. In Kalagou, Niger Sem Cement Plant is a historical plant that has been existence close almost hundred years. And I saw, that's why I think that you add that question. And I saw, that's why I think that you add that question. Well, for me, what matters so much is creating an environment. Businessmen are there all over the world, looking for a way, a place to go and invest their money. But they wouldn't want to invest their money in a place where their money will be trapped or their life will become at risk, like it is today in our state. Most people who intend to come to invest their money, most cases, they come in under the marketing tricks and they withdraw their investment and go back and tell their colleagues, they hear, you should be careful before you go in. Under our watch, by grace of God, we create an enabling environment that will make ease of doing business in the Bonyan states as number one, not only in the southeast, but in Nigeria, because we don't have vested interest. Most people come into power by having some commitments before they come in. And once they come in, they must fulfill those obligations. And those obligations and obligation they call from, from business people. So someone like me, by special grace of God, when I come in, who not, we don't have any commitment with any person. But first, in Kalagou Cement Industry today, if you want to revamp it, the cost of revamping it and cost of setting up a new one, it is better we go back and negotiate and work on, because there's already, let me say.
Thank you.
Overloaded, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Education, some of our flag bearers have made promises of free education. And we would like to know exactly, we know that at a point in the history of the Bonyan state, people were given passports, people were also sent on training abroad. What specific things are we going to do in the educational sector to make it vibrant and functional? What are the challenges you intend to prioritize and solve? We'll start from here, sorry.
Thank you very much. Education is one aspect of economy that can save a generation. If you educate one child in the poorest family of a Bonyan state, 25 years, that family will not be poor again. Well-educated child can save a generation. So when we talk of education, it's so important to us. But the question like you asked, how, what do we do? We must go back to the drawing board and see that we still need that free and compulsory education from kindergarten to at least secondary school level. At university level, there are also key areas that we also need to give certain leverages. So our educational system is not only being affected by finance, it's also affected by potentials and technology. Now, if you pay a professor maybe 400,000, 500,000, which is less than a dollar, $1,000, would ask outside here, such person can earn 10 times what I want you pay the person here. Do you expect a miracle? You don't expect a miracle. So what we are currently having is what called brain drain. What is brain drain? You train others' use. Today, in England, an Abonyan is in charge of training doctors in England. A child that was trained here is now being used in England. So when we train, a little we can, and we don't even pay them well, and they, and they move out from here, then what do we expect? So if, not just by training, but we also think of paying our workers well, then if you go to a Bonyan state university, for instance, it's a living ghost of itself. The people are not well paid, no, no enabling environment is created. In civil service, there's what's called rule of engagement. What is rule of engagement? You employ me to be productive, but you need to provide an enabling environment for me to, to be productive. Now, government is struggling with a lot of things. They employ people they cannot even pay, and they employ who are not even productive because their enabling environment is not created. So we need to look at these issues in terms of our educational system. So when we look at our primary school, our education also, it's also something to look at compared to other places. In England, it is different. We have what's called breaking room, you know, breaking and repair before you go to production. So a child should start learning, when the child start learning how to break, a teacher is there to watch that child, or develop consciousness of breaking, to repair. The child, before the primary school, even getting to secondary school, that child can produce something as a handiwork. Now here, we don't have. So our educational system has to change, change. It's not just going the normal way or offering free education. Free education is important because of our poor people, of where we are coming from. But quality of that education is more important and the dynamics of it is mostly important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sovereign, subventions to universities, strike, constant strike. Do you have any plans on those two issues?
Yes, um, in the education sector, the first question, that's why, before you start solving a problem, you have to do a kind of problem analysis. How did we get it wrong? Why did we get here? With the government took schools belonging to the missionaries. When I become governor, by June, I will return the schools back to the original owners. I will return the schools owned by the missionaries back to the missionaries. Because there are a lot of basic things in education, we have to get it wrong from the start. That will go a long way in rearranging our school system. Pete Obi did it in Anambra State. And a lot of good results is coming out of it. I've got a booklet of how he was able to relate to the missionaries in terms of our education sector.
Are you going to sublease universities to churches?
If they own churches, if they own them before, I would say the schools owned by the missionaries need to go back to them. And if need be, that is why when I talked about what we have in education, I summarized it by assets, quality and relevance. And by that assets, I mean on hindered access. Now there are a lot of taxations, even school, primary school, nursery school students are taxed, what they call IGR in our schools. That is hindered access to our school system. That will have to go. And then we have to do curricular reformation. It's not about going to school to acquire scholarships education. No matter the quantum of scholarships education you acquire, you may not be able to use it to help yourself and your next neighbor. So in giving some ventures to schools like you act, of course, there will be some venture to school. Of course, we are going to partner with our other international schools. I don't buy the idea that our experts should not be exported. They are also a good, when you train people and export them, they will return back to the economy from there. They also help to develop our economy. When you have your people outside. So it's not all about going, explaining, asking them to come and stay there.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
Should I continue on the education?
Yes.
Okay. As a matter of fact, let us.
The issue of strike, strike, of constant strikes.
Okay, constant strike. The issue of strike in Nigerian universities, polytechnics, name them, is as a result of not giving those lecturers what is due them. Because I believe that under any working environment, that people working there, if they are carefully taken good care of, they will ensure that there is nothing like strike. But the fact remains that we try as much as possible to cut short the wages and the welfare, the monuments that is due for lecturers and that necessitates incessant strike in our universities. And it is really affecting our students. Because when a student is supposed to graduate within four years and is graduating after seven years, then there is nothing to write home about. And that is why, under our government, we will ensure that we have genuine and useful discussion with the level leaders, they are super say, and ensure that all what is due the lecturers goes to them. Because if you don't give them what is due them, they will be compared to other side issues, things that they will be doing in the school, a situation where if a student don't buy a handout from the lecturer, he will not pass his courses. So it is affecting education and that is why we have to work seriously hard to ensure that strike is minimized to the barest minimum. Thank you.
Okay. This question came from, come forward, don't worry, just to redirect your answers. This question came from two persons, Peter Woko and Chief Mrs Charity Kebbe. Says, civil servants and the public servants are dying due to neglect on payment of salaries and gratuities and other entitlements. And many of them are just lined up as backlog. How do you tend to handle this when you become the next governor of the state?
Thank you very much. Let me start by saying that in Abonyan today, the government priorities are largely wrong. Last Christmas, there was 2.5 billion appropriation for Christmas celebration. Many civil servants, both in the civil service and the public service in the university, didn't end their salary before Christmas. But the state has spent 2.5 billion on Christmas largesse to many people who are not even in the Bonyan state. Under me, there will be fiscal discipline with our resources. We will do all it takes to ensure that the worker earns the right remuneration for his service. There will also be proper monitoring and supervision of those who work in our various MDA's, because we want results. So the issues we have today will be largely addressed by right prioritization of our resources. In education, like we were discussing before now, the total Abonyan state government budget for on education this year is less than 10%. Many schools in this state the last seven years has not received the overhead to run primary schools or secondary school. Nobody has overhead, nobody has incentive, there is no provision for our schools. When I become your governor, education is going to have 25% minimum budgetary provision. And I am going to partner with the mission. When I say partner with the mission, the partnership that works there in Ambra may not work here. We have to agree on what works. Because today we have 1,010 primary schools and 227 secondary schools. How many of the schools are owned by the mission before now? So we need to work hard partnership that will deal with our education. So for me, education is my primary constituency. I am a pro of education. I also work in the university. So we will resolve the issues that are inhibiting the growth of our school system by focusing on competence, focus on the right investment and the right monetary evaluation processes. If we do this, we'll be able to drive our processes forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. I want to take you on on the issue of security. As a Guba candidate of People's Democratic Party, what are your plans to bring peace to some of these worrying communities in the Bonyan state?
Thank you very, thank you very much. Well, first, in our manifesto, one, security is a priority and unity to the Abonyans is top priority in our manifesto. If as a governor we come into office, we will try to reconcile every communal crisis, every differences between communities to communities. We know that most of these crises are crises orchestrated by political agendas. And we use political solution too, and the right engagement, to sit with our people and let them know that it is time for Abonyan state to work as one. They were one people with one, with common destiny. So unifying the state is a top priority. Myself have been a unifier, I've been a peace-loving person. And then this crisis is not good for us, it is hindering the development of the state. If you really want to develop the Bonyan state, you cannot develop a state where there is crisis. So as such, we want to be sincere, we use our religious bodies, our reverend fathers, our pastor, our clergyman, we set up committees that will give us the true positions and the true situation of what has happened in the past and we create solutions to it. So when we come into office, we unify Abonyan state and make Abonyan state to become a place where people can live as brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, you don't have anything on security?
We have to understand that security is a tripod of poverty, injustice and deprivation. When we talk of insecurity in a place, communal crisis, for instance, most of those communal clashes are a result of deprived interests, as a result of poverty, as a result of injustice. However, the system in, in this part of the world, that people do anything and go free, in our time, it will not be so. We are going to create a central monitoring system, that even if you are in, you are in your farm, we will see you there, we will know when someone want to invade it, invade you. It might look so impossible, but look at our ordinary traffic, you go and put a policeman there, he doesn't walk here. Where policeman will try to wait someone who break traffic. Let us look at a system where we create consciousness of being watched. When that consciousness of being watched is created, it will solve a problem of our insecurity. But however, let's look at those places who have communal clashes, Iberdo and Ukele in Cross River, Ephium, Eza and Ephium and other places. What are the, the root causes and the root causes of those crises? Some have been deprived, injustice have been meted on some, and poverty is a factor. When we resolve this, no one goes on causing crisis when you create a robust economic system.
A moment, please.
Thank you very much.
Just hold on. Let's just see, you said, just to address certain points that you raised. That from the crisis are mainly from poverty.
Yes.
And one other thing you mentioned. But then, how can you reconcile this crisis, bearing in mind that most of us are aware of this crisis to, most of them be as a result of boundary problems? And bearing in mind that our security is in the exclusive list and you can't do without the National Boundary Commission? How can you reconcile it with?
I return this question to you. Who are those people causing those problem? When our youth are gainfully employed, when our youth are gainfully engaged, those things will be highly reduced. When they are gainfully engaged, because you're asking someone to take an arm against another person, what have you done to make sure that that person is well fed? If you look at my size, do you think I will be able to take a gun against you? I'm well fed. So it is in poverty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
But, um, if you, if you indict the, hello, please, can we have quiet, please? Can we have quiet in the, in the house? If you indict the youths, do you also indict them for boundary disputes? Is it the problem of youths? Okay, sir. The, there's something, let me add this to what you're going to handle. A question from Dr Azubike Ongwe, Chairman TUPS from Iko.
Is a result. Unfortunately, the word fight results. For example, malaria is a result. No matter how the quantum of malaria drug you pack in your room, if you don't do. No matter how the one term of malaria drug you pack in your room, if you don't look at mosquito, you could not have malaria around you. So we have to look at the causes of insecurity. That is how my administration is going to address this insecurity problem. What are the root causes? We will leave the causes on this board. Because you can't solve problem of security by buying more arms and giving to the youth. First, you start with yourself. Who is the person, that's why we say verify, Labour Party, P T O B will say verify. The character of the governor. I have received a United Nations award as a peace ambassador. And so when I'm on board, they will know that the peaceful man is on board and everybody will fall in line. And so you cannot solve the problem by creating more problems. First of all, like I said, when you create jobs, when you empower the youths, when you do your agriculture, like afforestation, you are talking about boundary dispute for instance. If you create forest, forests used to form a buffer zone to increase our ecosystem and create employment. If you do plantation in our boundaries and encourage, we had forest guards before, we had forest guards. If you activate all the structures that are already in place, our boundaries will be guided. If you create, if you do afforestation, it will also help us. So insecurity is about solving the problem from the root of creating employment, diverting people to a productive enterprise, our youth. Instead of this whatto whatto thing they are doing now, divert the youth, eh? In a land you whatto whatto enterprise, divert the youth to a productive enterprise, let them be busy. They are the man in devil's workshop. So we are going to create employment, develop skills in our schools, do apprenticeship and people will learn, people will be busy and they will develop our society.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to add something to this security issue, sir. As a matter of fact, it is said that security is of the Lord, number one. Number two, security is for everybody. Number three, security should be for the government to actually take good care of it. And I could remember in my opening speech, I made it mandatory to Ebonians that should I be given that position to be the governor of the state? Any issue that has to do with security, insecurity, crisis or whatever, name them in any community that lasted more than 21 working days, my government should be held responsible. As a matter of fact, issues of security or insecurity has genesis and the genesis is more of political undertone, whether we like it or not. And as such, if we fail to identify it in that angle, we are bitten about the bush. Cases like Ezah from issue, which I am a victim, is number one. Ishin Kwan da bo mege, name them, Izzy and the Cross River or whatever. So if we really want to deal with insecurity or whatever, the government in power should be held liable, except we are dealing ourselves. And again, the traditional rulers, the traditional heads also have a role to play. Because when they call their children to order, it will minimize insecurity, it will minimize crisis. I beg to stop here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I was trying to align this question from Dr Azubike Ongwe into this security issue. You got it, right? Okay.
Let me go back to what Dr Azubike said. I can tell you here conservatively, about 70% of the crisis in this state is caused by government people. Government wants to install all town union presidents in all the communities without understanding the lifestyle, the issues in those communities. Now, if we return the communities, which is the highest gift any governor can give to this state, I as your governor by God's grace, will return the communities back to the communities. Let each community elect whoever they deem fit to be their town union president and will not interfere. That's the number one cost of the crisis. Two, many of our traditional issue in this state and town union president have become government tools. They are no longer serving the communities, they serve government interest. As your governor, I will not interfere in the affairs of our communities. My job, my, my job, my job as your governor to make it happen and enabling for businesses to thrive, sort out our education, sort out our health, provide access to food and security. Let communities take full responsibilities. Elect your area, elect a town union, a situation where the government wants to install S U G president in the university, install Okada chairman, install N M A chairman, M B A chairman. This is the cost of all the crisis. There is too much tension in this land, too much oppression, too much repression and we will liberate our people. Do your businesses and be happy people. That is the real thing we need to do when I come on board, allowing our people to live decently. Today, I was attacked in Izzy in a campaign trail. My running mate here was attacked two days ago, you know, possibly. Our supporters have been attacked in more than 10 places in this state. We cannot run a state where people don't have freedom to make choices. Democracy is about freedom. The moment we impede on freedom, democracy has no value. So for me as your governor, what I must do is to allow people the free will to make their choices in any career you find yourself, in any community of your choices. Let our communities begin for the first time to feel like human persons. In this city now at 7:00 PM, everywhere shut down. You know, so this is my idea about town union. The local government system under me as your governor will be autonomous, I will not interfere. Let them spend their money and face their people in the communities. The government here has become a market, it's not supposed to be so. Everybody is moved from the community to the urban here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody spoken on security? Has everybody spoken on security? B D P, you want to make, have you said anything on security? Okay. All right, so let's go to another sector.
I would like each and every one of you to react to this particular question. It's all about water. Water we know is life. Of Red Bear Water Scheme, which is got over 11 billion, is not working. Also, Ezilo and Okawa Water Scheme that used to function are no more working. The Juju Hill Water Scheme in the metropolis has also collapsed. All these have led to cholera outbreak in our communities with many dead as a result of consumption of bad water by the people. How are you going to tackle the problem of water in the state? This question is from Uchenna Enya.
So we move into health, beginning with water and diarrhea. Is that why we stopped?
Praise the Lord, we are still in church, oh. Please, all this water, 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 the three mentioned, many of them have become abandoned projects. If I was allowed to read all my, the things listed in my manifesto, you have been opportune to see what I said about it. Let me give example with the one that is very close to us. When I returned to Nigeria from my study outside the country, I realized that I was an Ebonian. And when I came to Eboni, I was looking for how to come to terms with what I saw. And I was looking to see the tallest building in Eboni. I traced it to Ezah Road. And that building was constructed by the administration of Dr Samewo. The contract was given to Ashites. Thank God we have an Ashite here. They did all that they did, but that building of today is inhabitable. And I was discussing one of my cousins, who is the only son we have in Eboni State. Now, what do you say about this? Says, man said that you cannot inhabit there. If you make the mistake of going there, the building will collapse on you. Part of what I noticed in my manifesto is that all abandoned projects in Eboni State should be revived. Talking about water, I want to let us know that Eboni State, most of the places in Eboni State is not easy to get table water, drinkable water in Eboni. I tried producing bottled water and I was going as far as Enugu to go and buy water in tank and coming here and that made the cost of that pure, I mean bottled water to be so high, I dropped it. So you don't give something to somebody that doesn't know anything about it. We are going to look for a place to cite our water corporation. When I was a child in the 40s, development came into my town, I think. Over here we are to look for water, enough people have good drinking water. We go to a place like that and cite all this water corporation and stop all this white elephant project, which is stop wasting government fund. That's what I have in mind to do when it comes to my town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Water is so significant in the world creation of Eboni State. I have always said, any government that will give Eboni water, the name of such government will be written with gold. Because our issue right from creation has been water. We are known globally for poor water supply and this has been also encouraged by bad leadership. But let's look at the technical issues that has orchestrated our problem, technically, politically and then vested interests. Let's take it technically. The Ezilo Water Scheme, when it was constructed, in fact, what Jim Mobile gave to us as a zone, we cannot maintain as a state, is a shame. The Ezilo Water Scheme, when it was constructed, there was a technical issue. What was the issue? When they run a riser main to the reservoir, there should have been a return supply. That is why, when you pump water, when it was even functional, when you pump water from Ezilo, people along the line, in Thesee, eh, example, they will tap it and the pressure will not be enough to come to the city. Because you cannot pass this water supply to those communities without giving them the return supply. The same technical issue happened to Red Bear. They just ran one tank, one pipe down to Abakaleki. Those communities, they need this water, there should be a return supply. So that when they tap from the return supply, it will not affect the major riser main. That is only technical issue. Then on the political issue, you cannot put a rant peg in a square hole, make it somebody who don't even know how to spell water, a commission for water resources. It's an error. The proposal I presented to the government of this state, that a turn down is what is feeding me the whole of Central Africa. Today, I'm celebrated in Zambia, Uganda, Ethiopia and Kenya because of a proposal I tendered to this government. So when we put political issues, when it has to be professional, we need experts, we need professional experts, we need people who know, understand this rudiment before we're able to solve this problem.
Thank you very much.
And I am water expert, I am a consultant to the world, I will give you unlimited supply, water supply.
Thank you.
When I be your governor. God bless you.
Yes, Nancy, I don't know if you want to talk about the water issue. Can I, can we also? We are winding down, we will soon round off completely. Um, I remember I told you about the charter of demands. Before we round off, I also intimate our candidates that would want to just take one minute. But that is when we are ready, we'll let you know, that will be the last thing you're going to do for us. Take one minute to talk to us, your closing remark before you eventually finish. But there's something, that somebody made a reference to that building that is standing there, the tallest building. And it's been standing for a long time. What is actually the issue with that building? Can we use this opportunity to know from the horse's mouth? Is your question?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello, hello, please, please, let's give him time to talk.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to talk about water regulation. I mentioned it in my manifesto, that our infrastructure enhancement will include water regulation. In the analysis, our analysis, we saw that the major challenge is improper land use scheme in the state. We don't have proper land use scheme. I'll give you example. For us to run this state very well in terms of infrastructure, we need to acquire satellite imagery of the state that will give us the topo map, the topographical map. Because when you talk about water, you need the hills. That's why when the white man came, they cited the Juju Hill as the highest point and used it to establish building height across. So that if you are able to pump water to the tank on top of the hill, it will distribute to families with normal gravity and reduces a lot of cost in power. So if you are talking of water scheme, we need to get first of all, proper land use scheme. We have to acquire satellite imagery of the entire state, look at the uplands and put water tanks on top of the uplands. And so when you pump water up there, it will distribute and then that will give us building height. So that is the fundamental of water that we must have. Then on the building standing, it is a common project and who pays the paper, details the tool, who are the contractors? Government is owing us 1.7 billion as we speak for certificates generated, satisfied by the same people that you have done from this level to this level, you are supposed to pay this amount, they didn't pay. You do another one, they didn't pay. They are owing our company 1.7 billion as we speak. And so they've tried all, they turned into politics and whatever. So you cannot do otherwise. Even ordinary approval, we requested for approval to complete it on our own with our own resources, we didn't get it. So it is, it is, it is government property, it is not our company's property and we have to do it the way the government, once it's done. So that is.
Thank you very much. So it has nothing to do with structural defects? Thank you.
I think we are coming to, to the real issues. Anybody who will become our governor must be a man of proven integrity. I served in the government for almost three years. When I left, I submitted myself to E F C C for investigation. I have no criminal or corrupt case of internet. I didn't take the money. The building at Presco, as XLG, I'm aware, that building failed integrity test. That building failed structural integrity test. That was why the government discontinued any investment there. I'm fully aware of that. Now, issue of water supply. The problem is that governments can no longer manage city facilities. The Ofreko Water Scheme was a huge corruption. Because from Ofreko to Abakaleki is about 41, 42 kilometers. You cannot travel water from that distance and still have economic viability of the water. All over the world, water supplies are democratized at the community level. And facility companies are charged with the responsibility to produce, treat and reticulate and charge minimal cost that is commensurate with the value of the water. In Cross River here, there is a water company that treats water, delivers to household, there are water meter. Household pay fees for their water that is cheaper than the cost of a bag of such a water. So when you allow competence and proper governance process to come in, we will still be able to deliver water to households under affordable cost conditions without having to invest billions and get nothing. The Okan Water Scheme, if you go there, you will weep. The last approval, so the term we see here, we were in government. In fact, the Frekwe, at the time I left, had received more than 18 billion approvals and it has not delivered one cup of water in the city. So honor me as your governor, I will explore local arrangements within communities to ensure that water are supplied cost effectively, using the right manpower to do that. I will not allow sabotage, mediocrity to affect our sectors. Thank you very much.
I don't know.
Thank you very much. I want to disagree with you. Yeah, you were my teacher, but I disagree with you here.
Please, 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 please. Well, we're still in charge. This, please, could you just sit down and keep the mic? Thank you, sir. God bless you. The next person, it should be PDP. And please, what we're doing now, we're doing, you're doing your last statement. PDP, no, not on water. I announced it earlier on, we're rounding off. If you have, this is your last chance to tell Ebonyans to vote you, what are you telling them? One minute, one minute.
Well, first, my dear fellow Ebonyans, I would like to say that every person who has spoken say, "I will, we will." But look at me, I have done. Look at what I have done in the past, all the things they have mentioned here. And mostly some of the things I have done with my own private resources in the past. When you talk about education, I built schools and related to my community, today is functioning. When you talk about giving shelter, I've given about 140 Ebonyans homes. When you talk about building infrastructure, I build road to communities. When you talk about giving startup capital to people, I've give fellow Ebonyans startup capital to start businesses. I've given even foreign scholarship to people. When you talk about security, you can assure you that if you look at what goes around me each time I go, without having to intimidate any Ebonyans.
Thank you.
That will assure you the security is guaranteed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A round of applause for him. Thank you. We wish you all the best. Next person. One minute, last statement. What are we taking home from you?
The reason I made myself available to be your servant leader is because the present administration has taken their maximum number of years, eight years. And God helping me, I see myself as being capable all the way around to take the mantle of leadership of Ebony State. Though I was not opportune to read all that I have in my manifesto, there should be division of labor. If I'm voted into power, I have this to say. We need all the Solomon for matters of wisdom, for issues that involve fighting. We also need all the Joshua's, I'm talking Bible. Caleb, Samson's and Davi's. In areas we need holiness or righteousness, we call on Joseph and Daniel.
Thank you very much.
God being on my side, I will improve on the new order because don't put new wine in old bottle.
Thank you very much. A round of applause for him. God bless you. Wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
One minute.
All right, please, I need, there are issues that need to be resolved, the standing building. Somebody saying verify, we need to resolve it here. The issue of integrity test, we need to resolve it here. Because if we don't resolve that, someone wants to be a governor and he says verify, verify. And then when we verify you and something is against you, so we need.
One minute is going, sir.
So when we say verify, verify, I am experienced.
He still has an opportunity to talk.
I've traveled around the world, I've lived in 11 countries of the world, developed nations. I have the experience and exposure. Ebonyans, what is working in England can work here. What is working in our local countries, Zambia can work here. This applies Uganda, Ethiopia, this is a smart country I'm a consultant to. Ebony can work. Vote me as your governor, you will have unprecedented dynamic revolution in this state.
A round of applause for him. God bless you. We wish you all the best.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Hello, LP is talking, please.
Like he said, I would want to have a copy of the integrity test because it's lying. And I want to say that our government, when we get into office, will focus on development of Ebony State. We will turn our pains, our weaknesses into strength and opportunity to develop ourselves in such a way that people will envy Ebony State. We will work like as brothers and sisters in harmony and in peace. And we will make Ebony State a place that anybody would want to live in and do business and train his or her children. We will develop Ebony State in collaboration with the missionaries, with the missions, with our international partners and people who want Nigeria and Africa to level up the imbalance in the development.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank you for this opportunity.
God bless you. A round of applause for him. We wish you all the best.
Ebonyans, I greet you once again and I come to also tell you that if per adventure, you vote me in as the governor of Ebony State, we will ensure that all the needed things that we make pushmores on the faces of Ebonyans are being put in place. Then number two, we will make you people the deciding factors. Because under our government, there will be no familyocracy. There will be no Godfatherism. We assure you that whatever you want is what we will deliver to you. And most importantly, we ask for you to join us in prayers because if we fail not to remember God in this exercise, then we are going nowhere. We need the grace of God and we need the wisdom of God to flourish. Thank you very much.
We wish you all the best. A round of applause for him.
Sola is my name.
In concluding, let me thank our lordship for the opportunity to be here today to interact with our people, both those who are here alive and those who are watching us virtual. In the last five years or so, I've been the only one speaking to issues that bother on the freedom of our people, the maltreatment of our people, how people are harassed in this city. I have stood for Ebony people. I am appealing to you to stand for me in this election. When you stand for me, there are two things I will do differently. One is to return your freedom to you. You will have lifestyle that will be uninhibited by those who are in government. My government will govern of decent people, not people who are rascals, not people who are going to harass.
Thank you, thank you.
So I wish us well as we step into the election.
Thank you.
We will have Ebony where all of us will enjoy shared prosperity.
God bless you. A round of applause for him. Yes, can I go on? At this point, we also want to thank once again the organizers of this event. We are privileged to have been part of it. We can't call names, you already know yourselves. Father Samuel Okore, Dalolo, wish you all the best. Please, you have heard them, you have seen them. The ball is your court. If you have your PVC, you know what to do. No long stories, but the good Lord give us a good governor who will transform Ebony State to the Ebony State of our hearts and our dreams. This is our prayer through Christ our Lord.
Amen. Please, can we put our together for them? That's a wonderful outing. Thank you very much. Thank you all the panelists and the candidates that participated. Ladies and gentlemen, we are gradually approaching the climax of this event. Your excellency, my lord, permit me to invite the director, Justice Development, Peace and Caritas Initiative, JDCPI. Reverend Father Samuel Okore to come forward for the presentation of and signing of charter of demands. Father, please.
My lords, thank you. Please, please, please. I thank you all very, very much. My lord say you should wait until after this. Those serving, please help us out, stop every other thing immediately after the vote of tanks or before the vote of, after the vote of tanks is going on, you wait. Okay, those standing, please sit down or go down. Please, if you are standing, sit down or go downwards. Make your choice, please. Thank you very much. All other protocol duly observed. In our own pattern as Justice Development and Peace Commission, they are according to the national body, at the end of a program like this, we gather and articulate the feelings of the citizens and it forms the citizens charter and we make our demands. As citizens of Nigerian nation and Ebony State in particular, who have had the opportunity to interact with you, our dear governorship candidates of various political parties, we wish to make some demands through this charter of demands, believing that you have acceptance of the charter, we convince the citizens of Ebony State of your goodwill and make your manifesto more meaningful to the would-be voters, who in turn can use the charter as a basis for their demands and take appropriate collective action to ensure that they are achieved after the election. We wish to use the citizens charter as a basis for choosing who we vote for in the 2023 elections in view of ensuring better living conditions for all citizens of Ebony State through democracy and good governance. In this charter, the core areas of our concern in our interactive session form the development needs of our state. The core areas of concern in our interactive session slash meeting today are agriculture, education, health, security, economy, infrastructure, respect for human rights and the rule of law and church state collaboration. On agriculture, giving grants and soft loans to all farmers, providing modern tools for agricultural needs of our farmers. Education, providing free and quality education for all Ebony peoples in public institutions. Payment of bursary to all students from Ebony State in tertiary institutions from time to time. Subsidizing the cost of registration for WIC and professional examinations for Ebony students. Providing conducive learning environment and necessary facilities in public schools. Giving better remuneration and conditions of service for both the teaching and non-teaching staff of public institutions. On security, ensuring that there is high level of security of lives and property in Ebony State for defying government-owned security agencies to perform better rather than forming individual security guards that turn back to harass the citizens. Seeing to peaceful settlement and resolution of inter-communal crisis in different parts of Ebony State. On economy, enhancing the ease of doing business in Ebony State. Creating job opportunities for the teeming population of our unemployed youth. Prompt payment of salaries to Ebony stable servants with no delayed action in giving promotions and gratuities as well as payment of pensions. Building industries and harvesting our mineral resources. Investing funds generated internally for the well-being of all Ebonyans. On infrastructure, continuing the good works of the past governors, especially the outgoing governor, engineer David Weyze Umahé, regarding infrastructure development, especially on road construction. Ensuring that uncompleted projects of the outgoing administration are not abandoned. On respect for human rights and rule of law, giving due respect to the rights of individuals, groups or organizations living, residing or operating in Ebony State. Respecting boundaries with regard to constitutional separation of powers so that the much-needed checks and balances among the traitors of government can be done without undue influence of one over the other. On church state collaboration, according respect and recognition to traditional and religious institutions. Completing the process of handing over mission schools seized by the government and giving them back to the original owners. Signing the necessary legal documents regarding the government colleges already handed over to some churches. We, the members of the Cattie Leaders of Abakaleki, Justice Development, Peace and Caritas Initiative, CDA JDPCI, in submitting this charter of demands hereby solicit your support on assumption of office. We declare that this is a non-Pastitan, non-political, non-religious and not affiliated to any one single ethnic group. But this is an inclusive representation of interest, need and interest and needs of the entire citizens of Ebony State whose lives will be affected by the implementation of the words of this charter. These demands are by no means exhaustive, but only reflect our prioritized needs for now, which will impart positively on the lives of our members and fellow citizens of Ebony State. By God's grace, if you become the governor of Ebony State, we appeal that these demands go into the budget during your budget planning process. Sign, Reverend Father Samuel Okore. Esquire, if you wish. Good. Reverend Father Samuel Eni Okore, Executive Director, CDA JDPCI.
Please let us clap.
The next page, before the clapping, please. The, uh, dear brothers here, they have the copies already. The next page is acceptance calling, which we request you, if you accept, you endorse that for us and return the copies, we make copies and give back to you. I, das, 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 being a governorship candidate of das, 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 having ready demands in this charter, do hereby accept send as water we do for the good of the citizens if I become the executive governor of Ebony State. Signature and date. God bless you all.
Can we not clap for you? Thank you very much, Reverend Father Samuel Okore, Esquire, present choir.
He's here, former choir member.
Please, the occasion is not over yet, we are going to have a group photograph with the panelists, with the bishop and with other relevant stakeholders to this function. And in no distant time, we are going to take the vote of thanks.
Please, candidates, you can still wait. Your lordship, members of the clergy and ladies and gentlemen, let's quickly invite the empowered president.
Please, before the vote of thanks, please, I want to honorably say that the, this function was actually complete with the presence of the media houses here. EBC was here or is here, because I can see him again, Muri. Tidabere Muri, Von is here, Moses Mite, Genesis Akuma is representing the NTA. Arise TV is here, NUJ chairman correspondent chapel is also here. We want to welcome Uche Nainya, New Telegraph and then so many other media houses.
Citizens advocates.
All right, so please, thank you. I like recognizing my people in any function because after the politicians, after the woo is woos, we are the woo.
Dennis, Dennis, thank you very much.
Dennis, Dennis, thank you very much. And that is why I want to recognize the former general manager, Radio Nigeria FM, Eda Ngoke, Ngoke, who is here. Eda, you still there? You are welcome. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, as I welcome Reverend Father Augustine Okoraaga, the amped president for vote of thanks.
And the Reverend Father MC. Please clap for our MC.
Our professional colleague choir.
Thank you, Sir Agota. Uh, may I pray to stand on the existing protocol to deliver these closing remarks and the vote of thanks. May I begin with thanksgiving to God who has made this day a reality. The planning, the preparations and every other thing could not have been possible if not at the hand of God was on this project. And because God is with us, I believe we have done wonderfully well. May I thank his lordship, our dear bishop, Most Reverend Dr. Peter Mwori Choko for initiating, betting and sponsoring this interactive session. He had the vision of getting all of us to sit like this and hear from the candidates talk to us. And today we see that this day, which in the church is a feast of the conversion of Saint Paul, the closing of the prayer for Christian unity, that this dream of his lordship that has come to reality is what I see as what will bring about great transformation in democracy and good governance in a Boni state. My Lord Bishop, we thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to gather here and listen to the candidates talk to us. In fact, it was my Lord that told us uh, we have to stick to town hall meeting and not debates. He clearly defined everything for us and guided us along the way. So we are happy. Uh, what you dreamed, what you had in mind has actually come to pass. Thank you, my Lord. May I thank the director of this Catholic agency, the Catholic leaders of Abakaliki Justice and Peace, Justice Development, Peace and Caritas Initiative, Initiative for organizing and working so hard to see that this program actually uh, takes this form. Father Samuel Okore and your team, Esquire. And your team, you see, Father has a lot of energy. I doubt if he was able to catch enough sleep throughout the period of the preparation. If you look at him, it can tell. You see how Father looks even though, you know, he's a big man. Your father put everything into this to see that this is realized. Together with the team of the JDPC, many of them, they never ceased any day doing what they ought to do to see that this program comes to pass. So Father and your JDPC team, we thank you so much for your efforts. Uh, added to the JDPC, we had a priest for democracy and good governance. Those who are committed, who are committed to ensuring that the principles of democracy and good governance are well understood and carried on to the people in our state. I thank you all for your efforts. If the participants, the priests and the lay faithful and other persons, those who came with the candidates, if you were not here, uh, this thing wouldn't have happened. Thank you for taking the time to be here. It's not every person that is invited to an event that honors that event. For having honored this event, we ask God to continue to bless and honor you all the days of your life through Christ our Lord. The panelists and the moderators, I thank you all, the panelists led by Sir Gregory Odiyakosa. I've been hearing of Odiyakosa, Odiyakosa and I'm privileged to know him in person today. Uh, he's such a, a big name in the media industry. Thanks for availing us the opportunity to tap from your uh, talents and wealth of resources in the media and communication industry. Your team, the lady there, Adadi Oram, Mrs. Philippa and Father Ogodo, the Dasan Director of Communication, you have done so well. If not for your wonderful moderation, we may have spent so much time here. But you carried every person along, making sure that every person, every one of the candidates stuck to their time. May I now turn to the gubernatorial candidates here present. Let me bow to you. Thank you so much for honoring this invitation. Thanks for coming. And of course, from the charter, you heard something. And that thing, I want to put it this way. Let your word be your bond. Let what you have said here be what will guide you whenever you come to serve us. We want leaders who are not bossy. We want leaders who will take up the service, the leadership mentality that goes more by service. Believing that you are serving us. You are managing our resources. You are trying to help build us. And it will be the best of opportunity for you, opportunity of a lifetime that you came to serve a whole population of people in this state, bringing in the best of things for them. You have talked about education, healthcare and all that. We know when it comes to healthcare, you will come down to us and go to the hospitals with us. I know you will take your medications in our hospitals. It will help build our hospitals so that there will be no need to travel abroad for medical tourism. We have heard from you, all that you have said, we will be praying for you. So that any of you who emerges winner, it will not be just, I have won, therefore others are defeated, no. We are looking for a situation where one winner can carry all of you along. When you were talking, I said within me, if one of you wins, I want to see a situation where the winner will invite the rest of you and say, you had good idea on this, you had good idea on this. I want you to assist me to achieve that, which you had wanted to do, but the opportunity has come to me. We want to see all of you work together. Don't feel when the results are announced and whatever uh, the INEC, uh, INEC carries on with this job and announces the winner, feel that you have also won because you have contributed something here. Many of you were talking, I said, wow, we have many good people in a Boni state. It's only that they have not been given the opportunity to address our problems and challenges. I believe anyone who wins can extend a hand of friendship to all others. And together we will win big, we will win strong and our state will shine more brightly in the Committee of States in Nigeria. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for the insightful speeches and remarks you made. Thank you for everything. Let your word be your bond. God bless you all. May I humbly inform us before this gathering, that was yesterday, Engineer Wandugo Chukuma Awurigo of the Action Alliance Party informed me that he has some urgent uh, need that took him away. He had wanted to be here, but he couldn't be here. I believe if a similar opportunity comes, uh, he will be here. And those who missed out will actually feel some regrets about this. Pastor Dr. Ozzy Meze Kenetwabweze of the African Democratic Party also excused himself. Thank you and God bless you and lead you safely home as you go back.
Please put hands together for the amped president and our colleague in the talking profession. Father, thank you. Please, before the closing prayer, I'm directed to inform us that the town hall meeting and interactive session for those aspiring to go to National Assembly, House of Reps and the House of, and Senates may be coming very soon in the same venue. So bear that in mind that you will soon be called. Please put hands together for the bishop and amped and the JDPC. Thank you very much. Chinelo.
Thank you so much, Sir Godwin Aguta. Thank you, my Lord, the bishop. Thank you, um, the panelists and the incoming governors of a Boni state. All of us now are incomings. You are, well done, well done. And I have the honor and privilege to also hand over the microphone to his lordship, Most Reverend Doctor Pastor. Most Reverend Doctor Peter Mwori Chuku Papa, Papando for your Episcopal blessings and the closing prayer. Thank you. After that, please, we are going to have the group photograph in order of the bishop first, the panelists and then those on the microphone and other members, all together with our chief participants. Thank you. The microphone is there, sir. We have our takeaway too.
May I invite Father Kenet Noe to come forward and gather our intentions together in prayer, the type of prayer that's thum seven. And then we.
In the name of the Father, Hidima Ezichineke Ezichineke.
Eligwe na barama.
Eligwe na bama.
Oh, Imarama Ezichineke. Eligwe ne gosiwebeke.
Eligwe na bama.
Womwe nasele.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be your name, your kingdom come. Your will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
Give us this, with daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil.
How Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are you among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus.
Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us now and forever.
Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit. Almighty and ever living God, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for every blessings we have received from you. We thank you for the gift of the Catholic Church, for the gift of our dear country Nigeria. We thank you for the gift of our dear state, a Boni state. Lord Almighty, we thank you also for the people you have blooded this state with. We thank you, Lord, for the people that have gathered today to discuss how to move this state forward, to get the right person that will lead us when the election will be conducted by next month. Almighty God, we pray that this discussion we have done today will bear fruit, that we produce the best candidate that will lead this state forward in Jesus' name. Father Almighty, every authority comes from you. We have discussed together as human beings, but we know that you are the person who we elect, help us to get the right candidate. We present all those who are contesting to be governors to you. And we ask you, Lord, you know the best person among them. We pray that you help us to elect the best person to lead this state forward in Jesus' name. We also pray for our dear state, for the people who are going to elect these people. We pray, oh Lord, that you help them to get their PVC. This week will be the end. Many people have not collected theirs. It's our civic duty to vote and be voted for. We pray that those who have not collected their PVCs, we have a change of heart to go and get those PVCs and elect the right candidate on the right date in Jesus' name. Almighty God, we pray for a peaceful election, that everything that will happen throughout this election period will be done peacefully in Jesus' name. We also pray against those who are planning violence. Anybody planning to kill anybody in order to get into that booth will not succeed in Jesus' name. Almighty God, we pray against enemies of this coming election, both from national to the state level, that anybody who will be planning to wreak the election or to disturb the election will never succeed in Jesus' name. We also pray for the protection of the good people of God who want to have a peaceful election in Nigeria. That as we are planning to elect the right candidate, oh Lord, protect us. Do not allow the evil people to succeed. Give us victory in Jesus' name. Give the church victory in Jesus' name. Give the good people of Nigeria victory in Jesus' name. Almighty God, we pray in a special way for our state. Oh Lord, you know how to take care of this state. The people have presented their manifestos to us. Almighty God, from them, choose the right candidate that will give us, will lead this state well. We make these prayers through Christ our Lord. And we conclude by saying the prayers for. We pray for free, fair, and peaceful election in Nigeria. God, our Father, as we stand at the threshold of fresh general election in Nigeria, we, your children, come before you, conscious of how we have misused your gifts and blessings in our country since we started our new democratic journey. We also humbly acknowledge how we are. Leaders and followers have turned away from you and favored corruption, impunity, and violence. We admit that we have allowed greed, hatred, and fraud to permeate and mar our elections up till now. Merciful Lord, we turn to you pleading for mercy and pardon, strip us of greed, corruption, and impunity. Cause your Holy Spirit to expel from us all unjust tendencies and fraudulent practices. Read us of the evils of vote selling, vote buying, and election rigging. Oh powerful and benevolent God, without you we cannot succeed. Left to our own devices, we cannot progress. We therefore fall on our knees seeking your intervention. Transform our illiterate officials into impartial and incorruptible umpires. Fear them with the spirit of patriotism, justice, and fairness, so that they may conduct free, fair, and credible elections. Make our vote count transparently, that we may have honest, true, and just election results. Oh God of justice and love, inspire us to vote solely for the common good of our nation, so that we may elect visionary, honest, and competent leaders with hearts that beat for the welfare of one and all in our nation. Enable us to embrace and usher in a new dawn in Nigeria through these elections, so that our children can look forward with hope to a more bright, peaceful, and prosperous Nigeria. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Mother Mary, Queen of Nigeria.
Intercede for us.
The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
Blessed be the name of the Lord.
O my help.
Our help is in the name of the Lord.
O my heaven and earth.
Please, Fathers, join me to bless everybody. And may Almighty God bless and keep you, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Peace be with you.
And with your spirit.
Thank you so much for coming, and God bless you as you go.
Thank you. Please remember the photograph, the candidates with Bishop. Please, the snacks...
The snacks will now be served. Don't go until you receive something.
Please don't go, we have something for you, all the candidates, every participant. The photograph is here, at the stage here. Please, we don't want some people to cluster here, I beg. Please, with the candidates first, after that, the panelists.
The group photograph will be between the panelists and the contestants first. The panelists and the contestants.
Father Loa, Father Loa, your attention is needed here. Father Loa, okay, the Bishop wants to say. Please, 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 let's clear the stage for the candidates and Bishop first. After that, the Bishop, the candidates, and the panelists, please. Yes, the panelists, please. Please go back, go back, so that you can capture them, you capture them very well. Go back, go back completely, go back completely. With this arrangement, you cannot get all of them. Please, push back, push back.
The New Nigerian People's Party is not here. The deputy governorship aspirant or contestant is here. Engineer Mrs. Okochi Kechinyere, you are welcome.
Panelists with the Bishop only, after the candidates. Panelists with the Bishop only, panelists with the Bishop only, panelists with the Bishop only. Panelists with the Bishop only. Eyes, eyes, eyes. Panelists with the Bishop only.
Adadorama, come back for the group photograph with the Bishop.
Okay.
Adadorama. Please kindly come back for a group photograph with the Bishop. Okay? Can go ahead.